Do we have the minutes for the 20th?
Oh, uh, no. But we do for the 6th.
Okay, that's what I just received. Yeah.
I'm so good.
Okay, we'll call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Nicholas County Commission to Order. Today is Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021. One of you gentlemen would like to get started there.
Okay, upon review of the commission minutes for October 6th of this year, motion to approve this minutes.
Motion to approve. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those against, the motion does carry.
Upon review of the exonerations as presented by the Nicholas County Assessor, move to approve.
Okay, that motion's on the floor to approve. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, the motion does carry.
Upon review of the state of fiduciary matters as presented by Nicholas County Clerk, move to approve accordingly unless otherwise stated.
That motion's on the floor, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, the motion does carry.
Upon submission, budget revisions received from the elected officials of department heads of the county, where the commission will take appropriate action as deemed necessary.
That motion's on the floor, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, the motion does carry.
Upon review of the invoices submitted by various departmental offices, the commission will take the appropriate action as deemed necessary.
Okay, that motion's on the floor, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, the motion does carry. Now that being said, we'll take a break.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we have at the request of Commissioner Chapman, a review of an estimate for the day reporting center need for a wall separating it from probation. Is that the floor's?
Um, yeah, they asked us for a wall. I guess the Supreme Court is having them to put a wall in to separate the probationary from the rest of the, um, the thing. So what I would like to do is, we've got a proposal here for $7,499.80 to build that wall to the ceiling and add two doors to it. Um, and we're doing six inch walls, um, six inch wide walls, and that'll secure it. That's what they need.
They want a complete barrier.
So if I could get an approval on this, then we can allow, it is to landmark designing construction.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve this amount and add that this is for security of the records that are often kept there. And like I say, maybe sound basically against this, pray this has asked, I think it's appropriate.
Okay, that motion's on the floor, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, the motion does carry. And there was a potential completion date somewhere in December for that, hopefully.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, yeah. Good deal. That being said, we'll take another break.
Sit inside.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're here now concerning the estate of Stephen Coger filed number 10,222 regarding James Coger's qualifications of administrator. And I do want to ask for those who are wishing to speak, because we will need to square you in. Your name, sir?
Doug Coger.
Anyone else? If you don't mind, stand up please and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that in the matter now in hearing, your testimony will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thanks, sir. Okay, so, um, I guess what we need after following up from your letter to the clerk's office and/or the commission is a more specific, uh, setting forth of your objections concerning the matter. So if you could elaborate on that.
Uh, yeah, what I want, the qualifications, I, there's no, I don't understand the qualifications. I know my niece here, she wants to take it over and, and, and run it or whatever you want to call it, but I don't think that they understand what my brother had up there, you know, and his estate. They don't know what, I don't know, all his belongings, personal property, they don't know whose is who. They just think it's all my dad's. See, my brother's given his lifetime to live up there by my mother before she passed. And my brother, that was his home. And, you know, and, you know, my father's died since, my brother's died, and it's, you know, it's all turned over to the Hankses here and, uh, I don't know, it's just, they want a million properties, so I told him if I stepped one foot on a property, they'll be sorry. So I really don't know what's going on, but I'd like to see it done fairly. I'd like to see stuff distributed to the right people and fairly.
There wasn't an appointment made till June 14th of 2021. After 30 days, anybody can do the estate. So it was 10 months after his death that Clarissa Hanks came in and started the estate, at which time, I mean, anybody could have done it in that 10 months after the 30 days. If he does have an objection, I think we do need, this doesn't really say what he's objecting to. Um, I think we need a more elaborate, some kind of notice from you, you know, put in writing as to what is happening, that's transpiring, that is not in good faith or, but there has been notifications sent out. They were, uh, you was notified also when she got appointed, the letter didn't come back, and then of course, um, I'm assuming you did send the notice of publication?
Yeah.
Because I got that back?
Yeah.
And again, that wasn't sent back to us. So, uh, yeah, I think we just need something more solid as to what your, you know, what your objections are to than what you gave us, okay? And then we can proceed after that with the fiduciary to discuss. But before, I think it goes to fiduciary, I think we need just a little more information as to, you know, the misconduct. That's all I have to say.
You're asking me, I get that. I'll tell you again, it's just, I was told not to step one foot on a property. If I did, I'd be sorry. So, you know, I don't know where I stand. I was told the same thing before my father's estate, so I don't know. My hands are kind of tied there. That's, that's a qualification. I don't know, there's been a lot of stuff taken out there by this, these people here, and I just like to see what, what's, what's left.
I don't show that Stephen Coger owned any real estate?
Nope.
So, I mean...
I don't know. My momma gave us his lifetime up there. There's a piece of paper she wrote out for that.
And at the end of the lifetime, it was to be what?
Pardon me?
What was the, what was the writing on this at the end of the lifetime?
Oh, well, she has it. She can tell.
Was it of record or was it just something, agreement? Because I don't show that he had a life state either.
He did not.
Okay.
Not in writing.
Okay, alright.
Alright. And not recorded in court.
I don't know where it's at.
No.
Yeah. Okay. And those do need to be recorded in the courthouse, right?
Yeah, I mean, if it, if it was in a deed form, it would be.
Who owned the real estate?
Who owned the real estate?
It was first my grandmother, Jean Coger, and when she passed, it was her husband, Porter Coger, and then he passed, and it was passed on to my mother, Renee Hanks. So that's kind of how the estate went.
So your recommendation is just getting more information?
We need just some information, and then I guess you could talk to your counsel to see whether or not it needs to go to fiduciary. The estate isn't showing. Um, it had $5,400 in automobiles, which were, the newest one was a 97, and then there was $2,061 in checking account. So, I mean, I, I think that we need some more, just a little more, you know, information before it would be sent to fiduciary, because there isn't anything, you know, really, I think once the funeral's probably paid and things are taken care of, there's not going to be anything to pay an attorney. So I think first let's just get some a little more information, come back here, see if we can't get things worked out, and then if not, then give it to fiduciary.
What would be a regular timeline that the clerk's office would recommend?
Well, I would say, uh, the first meeting in December. In December, that would be the month, right?
That's normal.
Yeah, so...
So if we could receive that information by November 24th, that would give us plenty of time to get it on the agenda and, uh...
And I'll go ahead and set up a schedule today for the time and send you all letters as notice, if, if I get it before then. I mean, I have to have it before then. You said November the 24th?
Yeah, that's the Wednesday before, I mean, that's...
Because I need 10 days to send out letters to tell them. So I will send up, I will send out letters, let's, can we make it the second week in December? And then that way, if I don't have it by the first meeting in December, then I can send out letters saying I object or to have another meeting.
Yeah, okay.
That, that would work better.
And there's no will working?
There's no will.
Okay. So next Wednesday, the 10th, then? We'll just need that information to the clerk's office.
I want it by the first of December.
First of December.
That gives me, that gives them a home up, and then I'll just schedule it for the second meeting in December instead of first. That gives me time.
Okay.
So it doesn't get it to me that I have time to get the notes out to everybody as to whether we'll have a hearing or if this will just be removed from record.
That's fine.
Okay, is that good?
Is there any objection to that? Hearing none, that will be the decision of the commission, and appreciate you all coming in. Thank you. Take another break, and I'll be looking at it. Now we have at my request regarding the Homeland Securities proposal they received on the Homeland Storage Building concerning some reconstruction on some facilities inside the building itself and also the installation of shelves. Do you have that? Yeah. And while she's doing that, we'll go ahead and go on to the second one here, is the discussion concerning the jail's HVAC upgrade. Deputy Holder is actually on vacation, but it's my understanding he will bring, be bringing us something on that, because of course with the weather changing, we do need, thank you, we do need that done to get it regulated and sealed off from the outside weather. That being said, back to the Homeland Security shelving project, this is a quote provided by Old School Affordable Home Improvements of Craigsville, which John went and showed him what all, you know, the Homeland Security Office wanted for this project. He did provide a sketch of what it would look like at the end, of course, this is the former glass building, shoving all the way around with the two-story structure removed. Anything you want to add on that?
No, I'd like to proceed with, with the company there with Doug. He's did work for me in the past, and is very good at what he does. With that being said, I also bought six lights yesterday for the lighting for that. We want LED, the one that looks like this only fan, so, uh...
You found the high water?
Yes.
That's good. Is that something this guy could maybe do for you too while he's there? I don't know if he's an electrician.
Trouble, I will say, you're probably going to have to have an electric person.
Yes.
So I didn't know if he's an electrician or not.
He ought to put sockets in. What, is there any lights in there at all?
Uh, they're the old ones, but they're, yeah, they're, they're hanging by some, some banned wire that I wouldn't trust.
They're hanging actually off the doors, the slot frame, whatever you call it.
Yeah, rails. Yes, yes.
So we definitely need it up there.
Is Paul still doing any work for it?
Yeah.
Maybe if Paul were down there and put in six sockets, because that's what it's will take.
Yes.
So screwing, yeah.
Yep.
They require a special one or special wiring because they're high wattage?
No, no, they're, yeah.
No, they're LEDs, and they're just, they're super broken.
Yeah, okay.
And I won't be, I can't, I'll have Francis put that there. And probably have him...
And some outlets and stuff too all around.
If you need some outlets.
There's outlets already there, but I'll have him check, I'll just have him check everything from the meter box in and make sure everything's up to code and bar.
And not DIY.
Now, they left that big air conditioner under, right?
Yes.
Built it into the shelves.
Yeah.
But you could even...
Yeah, we'll locate it somewhere.
Yes. Relocate wherever you want.
Okay.
You probably have it hardwired, big enough for you.
If we're gonna put, are we gonna put an opener on that door, or are you okay with it?
Right now, I'm okay with it, but as more time progresses with myself and the sheriff putting more stuff in there, it'd be a lot better accessible.
Go to dinner or something?
Yes.
Why don't you have Paul wire up 4-1, just put an outlet 4-1?
Just plug it in.
And plug it in.
And then we can have Pat, if you wouldn't mind getting ahold of Evergattis again, who fixed the door originally, if they can.
Well, the only thing is, is the type I'm thinking of is, is it goes right on the end of the door, and it, uh, it works off of the tube. It's like what I have on mine, and like Amy does, those are called liftmaster.
So you want to change the door?
No, no, you don't change the door. You just change, you just...
Because that door now...
Instead of having the arm with the garage door, this is right up at the head, and it just works off of it.
Okay.
And it looks really good. And Mike Amy, he has the franchising for liftmaster.
Okay. So if you would actually, if I can, if we can prove that later.
Yeah, I've got one of my big garage doors on, and it does fine.
Yeah, because, and Craig will tell you, when you go to open that door, you better watch it, because it's going.
It'll let me open it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's going.
They did too good of a job, didn't they?
It does need adjusting a little bit too, but I'll make a motion to accept this and get it going.
Okay. Motion's on the floor to approve this proposal, which is under, of course, the bidding procedural amount for the total of $6,500. It doesn't say anything about a payment schedule, so I'm just assuming it's the end of the job.
It's the end of the job, yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, so end of the job, it'll be $6,500 paid to Old School Affordable Home Improvements of Craigsville. Any further discussion or questions?
You don't have, you don't have the power turned on down there right now?
Not yet, no.
It, it probably wouldn't hurt to get the lights put in first to get the power on the floor.
Yes, that's what I was, I was waiting on them to come in, and then we'll get everything situated.
Or something.
That way, everything can be checked.
I think it'll be like that, that's so much easier. Yes. Otherwise, you've got to bring a generator in. Yes. Okay.
Yeah, so you are getting him to contact on Paul Boston, if you can get showing which he needs.
Okay.
Okay, so that motion is still on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, the motion does carry.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming.
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything you need to talk about?
No.
Okay, alright, let's check.
We're going, we're going to Clay County.
Yes, okay.
That's what will be the rest of the day.
And while you're there.
And try to open up those negotiations we talked about.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, well, you go ahead and take a break.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're here now with County Clerk Robert Panne concerning meetings on the magistrate or district, so the floor is yours.
I don't know why we're there for.
Okay.
We have, I just got off the phone with Doug, who's going to Amatic, and they might have a map, a preliminary map, I think, in the next week.
Okay.
They will by the end of next week, but it won't be sent. And they'll have our suggested precinct changes based on the new delegate line. And then we'll have to...
Where they're splitting hands and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
But they'll have some suggestions for us on how to do that, and then we'll have to approve them and go back to the end.
Okay.
But we might be able to work off of that.
So we have to send back for approval. Once we approve the precincts, and then it comes back to us, and then we work on the actual districts?
Right.
Okay.
So, what else is on the table again for next time?
This is more preliminary to go, but they're gonna make a suggestion, and then we're gonna have, they're not willing to...
Communities and such, we're gonna break them off. Okay.
Okay.
At that time, or at this time, if you all want to go ahead and do, get public input on it, you can do that, but we don't really have anything to go off of right now.
We don't have anything to go off of yet, so...
That's true.
It's until we have something to go off of, then's when we need to get input.
Yeah, okay. I'm probably better to go.
Yeah.
So you can have one if you want. You don't have to, if you can.
I think we should.
But once we get the maps back, or, once we, we approve them, I mean, based on our data, we'll send it to them. They'll get you a set map, and then you had to advertise it for 15 days. After 15 days, you can go to it.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you, man.
Thank you for the opening. That being said, we'll take another break.
Yeah.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're here now with Brian Totten of Master Services Corporation concerning the Craigsville Generator Projects with outstanding payments. We also do have with us here today Mr. John Tuggle and Mrs. Cassandra Lawson, sorry, of Region Four. So the floor is yours, Brian. If you wouldn't mind to come up here or something, just so we can make sure that our system gets you recorded there for minutes and stuff. Thank you. And just for your information, we do have legal counsel by, just, I'll make sure I establish, you know.
As you stated, or not stated before, I'm Brian Totten with Master Service Corporation, located in Elkins. You know, we are a commercial industrial electrical contractor that was awarded the Craigsville PSD FEMA Generator Project back in April of 2021 of this year, in the amount of $450,000. You know, this project was originally bid on November 13th, 2019. You know, we were asked several times by Thrasher Engineering to carry our bid through until the money was available. You know, we've revised our price a couple of times due to price increases at that point in time. Our understanding at the time of award was that FEMA had approved the project, approved the funding, and the funding was available, you know, for us to fully proceed with everything. And that was through Region Four. You know, we, within the last couple of months, we were just informed that this money is not readily available, and it's, there's been delays in getting us paid. The other thing was that FEMA was not covering the full cost of the contract, and that the local PSD and West Virginia Department of Homeland Security was involved in the funding. And so, and on to where the, all the problems and the delays lie between all of those entities on that end of it. Since the inception of this project, we have billed over $288,700. Of that amount, we have been paid a total of $13,770 to date. The invoice date for the 13,770 was April 14th, and we received that payment on September 9th, five months after the original invoice date.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, if you all wouldn't mind to mute yourselves there real quick, we're in one last appointment, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Outstanding invoices are listed in this letter that you have a copy of here. You know, and typically, you know, construction contract invoices, you know, we're paid within 45 days, the contractors on, whether it be the state of West Virginia, whether it be a private entity, school building authority projects, you know, whatever on that. And as a small business, we greatly depend on, you know, prompt payment of the customers. This has not been the case on this project. And we basically say, due to non-payment of over $274,900, we've had to use our line of credit to cover the vendor costs as well as employees' salaries. Master Service demobilized all of their personnel and equipment as of three weeks ago. We notified Thrasher Engineering and Region Four of our demobilization due to non-payment. We also notified them that demobilization, remobilization charges would be added to the contract amounts. Currently, you know, we have installed the 450 KW generator, it has not been started up, and have the 60 KW unit intact in our office in Elkins. The 225 KW units are in the manufacturing process, waiting on one or two small parts, and are scheduled to ship in the next two weeks. So, once these units are in hand, you know, we're looking at two to three weeks to complete this project, to install them, make the final connections, work with the power company, and start their units. We can't purchase the fuel for these, the diesel fuel for these units due to not having the units, you know, installed on site. So right, you know, right there's another added cost on at least two of the units. We hope, we would have been complete by this time. We will not be back on site until all payments have been brought up to date, and a change order for increased cost is approved and processed. The change order will cover additional expenses to include remobilization, increased fuel cost changes for the generators and other increased costs. And I will say also that there's been a couple of change orders on this project, and since the early inception of it, and we're yet to receive a signed copy of those change orders. One was for a sizable credit back to the county or to the PSD. And as a contractor, you know, we're not in the habit of financing, you know, any state or, or federal government entity. This delay of payments greatly affected our ability, you know, to bid additional and accept additional projects, you know, due to our bonding, our line of credit, et cetera, being tied up by Nicholas County Commission, Craigsville PSD, Region Four, West Virginia Department of Homeland Security, and FEMA. We hope that the County Commission, you know, will help this with these, you know, payments. Cassie did provide a 25% payment to us just a few minutes ago, so I have that check in hand. Cassie, did that come from?
That came from the Water Development Authority, and that funding now goes directly to the Craigsville PSD. The remaining amount, so the, the amounts that are owed are for, pass, so it's number two, three, and four. The 75% that comes from the Division of Homeland Security, you know, from the FEMA funding, online, it does show that it has been sent to the auditor's office and is pending in Oasis. As soon as the auditor's office approves that, then a hard copy check will come to the Nicholas County Commission. It can be deposited into whatever account is appropriate, and then a check fee forwarded for the remaining amount. And that will catch all payments up to date. I note that you have issued another pay estimate. I did see it come through an email in draft form, but we have not yet received the fully executed copy. As soon as we get that, we can get it on the commission's next agenda, which will be week after next, and that we can get that one in process as well.
That one, I believe, was emailed out last week.
Yes, that's how it's written.
The, the hard copy. Well, the email went out, and the hard copy was mailed at the same point in time, so. But anything that the County Commission could do, you know, to expedite, you know, these payments would be greatly appreciated.
When you say 25%, you're talking of the remaining $288,700.
Of what we've invoiced, yes.
Okay.
Invoicing.
The remaining 75 is pending?
Yes.
Approval. I mean, honestly, I mean, I feel worried, because you do have a lot tied up here, but I think Region Four is doing all they can to get you paid. If it's in the auditor's hands, that's in, nobody, I mean, not even the governor can tell him what, I mean, you know what I mean?
It kind of starts, it sounds to me like it starts out at FEMA, and maybe FEMA is the one that's really slow to start.
Well, it's, it's kind of a long story.
It is a long story. I'm gonna jump in here. Been through FEMA a lot, and Cassie, I mean, lived through the 2001 flood too. So, anyway, and we've heard this story before, believe me, similar type things in the past. A lot of it is just the cumbersome bureaucracy, and one thing that put a real wrench into this one was that the state had the Oasis accounting type system, and that really put a logjam in it. Nothing I say will make you feel any better. I could tell you, I could tell you that right now, it's because I can't hand you a check. But bottom line is, the bureaucratic grind of this particular project, and some of them that are also in that same mill that where they did... that are also in that same mill that where they did some changes at the state level, slowed things way down, and it's just difficult to get through the system. And it's, it's hopefully getting closer. If you remember, the auditor's office ramped up their oversight over the last year or so because of things, some things that happened across the state. But the auditor has really ramped up their involvement in these type things. And everybody is looking at it at each level, over and over and over, before they make a payment. And that's basically the answer. There, there is not, and I will say, this commission has not slowed up things one iota. They've approved whatever they could, when they could. And they've done what they could. All we could do is push the buttons above us and try to get them to move. And those guys, for instance, the guys we deal with, they have to deal with people above them. There's multiple layers, but the, the good news is, it's in the auditor's hands right now to where you can get a big chunk of your money. We hope that happens quickly. That's all I can say.
How much is in the auditor's hands, Jim?
It's that other 75% that he's talking about.
The 288?
Yeah.
What do you, what do you expect your mobilization costs to be?
Rough numbers, 10,000 to 12,000. And not, not knowing what the diesel fuel prices are doing, you know, right now from the time that we bid the project, they're, they're continuing, they're going up every day.
Well, and I want to throw something in about the change order thing that where you're reducing it. We wish we could have done that really quickly, but what happens is, if, if you throw that change order in the mill, that means that there's a budget revision for the project. Budget reviews are very slow at FEMA, I mean, extremely slow. So that's why that, those change orders haven't been really processed because we knew that would slow down your payment.
Well, but the other thing is, is the PSD and the county is holding 10% retainer on us. So until that change order is processed, this job's finished, that change order delays our final payment, which is basically our profit on the job plus additional expenses. So, you know, when it's, when that change order is delayed, then our final payment's delayed. So, it doesn't, it doesn't help us, you know, on that end.
Understood.
I'm hearing, I'm hearing the same thing with Oasis from other state entities. We bid four projects with the State of West Virginia National Guard. We were the only bidder on those four projects. I'm having problems there getting paid also. What does that tell you about the contract, contractor's thoughts and, you know, with dealing with the state of West Virginia? They're saying we can't get bids.
I, I, we completely hear you there because that, that hurts our, all of us, and it hurts all of us. And all, all I can say is, you know, one, one maybe deficiency we have, we need to explain this right up front when it's FEMA and say, be prepared to hold, you know, whatever percentage is in your line of credit for a long time and put that in your bid.
Well, you know, and we do that, and then the project's over budget.
Understood.
And it doesn't go. So now we've wasted, you all wasted your time, we've wasted our time, the engineering firms have wasted their time.
Understood.
We, we keep hearing it's COVID, it's COVID, it's COVID. Everybody's working from home. We can work sufficiently, if not more, from home, and that's not happening.
We're, we're looking at some other options currently.
And we appreciate that.
Give me some more glass.
We also know that, you know, it's top priority for you all, for PSD, to have these units online.
I just talked and that's all we had.
Yep.
Not any good, hey!
No.
Right. They just float? Oh, you don't want.
That's what we were seeing earlier.
Okay. If you slow down, you just fall over.
The CCs on the bottom, if not.
Yeah.
Works tough. Yeah, it's been tough, been real busy.
It's very.
Real busy. You still got everything going on over and over? He's doing that potter, potter, he's not, is it, don't he gut?
We, we actually thought that this, we would have had this project completed back in the summer.
I understand.
You know, and, and, and it's not, you're all sorry, it's not.
The internet stuff?
It's.
Like we're just shipping along the.
The environment right now.
All three of us have businesses.
Just whatever.
Understand.
Local.
Okay.
And, and right now, we're running into it. I mean, it's just.
I am not, it was in a meeting or not.
We do a lot of generator sales and installations, and, you know, we're seeing generators pushed out to 41 months right now.
Well, what I would, I would offer you, you check with any of the contractors that we worked with, and they'll tell you that we were very hard to get people paid. Very hard. It's top priority. Really? And that's what makes things, makes dollars, get in the county, in and out of the county, taxes clean. It's a good deal.
Yeah, this project's.
I've seen. I think it's a little too. Same like, and a gas station. Of course, you know, jewelry.
Well, we have.
That's it out right in the parking lot at the.
And this is the result of the flood?
Good looking stuff. Take a little bit of time making stuff. Well, you know, yesterday, we, we had a lot of grants awarded in the area and in big numbers, and that was from the 2016 flood, and we're just now getting that grant money out.
Yes.
Five years later. All right.
FEMA doesn't think too much of West Virginia anyhow, so.
Well, we hope we can do things to help change that. We do have a, a good county commission here that works very hard to get people paid.
Three, three years ago, I met, well, the State of West Virginia Purchasing Division had numerous meetings around West Virginia and the larger cities to meet with the contractors, meet with the vendors, and say, guys, what do we need to do? You know, what, why are we not getting competitive bids? What do we need to do to take care of, you know, our vendors and contractors? I attended three meetings, different, different towns, and everybody was, all the contractors, all the vendors were saying the same thing. We can't get paid. We can't get paid in a timely manner. You know, we have to jump through 1001 hoops to ever get the, the payment processed or get the orders processed, and in the meantime, the prices are increasing. And then we're stuck, you know, holding the bag on that. And then, once we get the order placed, material on site, contract services completed, we can't get paid. So it got better for about six months, and Oasis come online and boom, there we go. And that's what we keep hearing, you know.
It'd be my recommendation that this commission needs to meet with our legal counsel in executive session to discuss a contractual matter concerning this. So it would be my recommendation at first that the three commissioners and legal counsel be the only ones in the room, and then afterwards, we bring in Clerk Painter in Region Four to discuss some legalities. But if there's no objection to that, do I hear a motion to convene to executive session pursuant to West Virginia Code 6-9A-4? Motion's on the floor, is ready discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against the motion does carry. And again, the three commissioners should be the only ones remaining. Yes.
Recording in progress.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn from executive session pursuant to West Virginia Code 6-9A-4, and for the record, there are no decisions made during that time. It is 11:42 a.m. Motion's on the floor, is ready discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, the motion does carry. That being said, we're all back in the room, and Commissioner Chapman would like to address the room.
Mr. Totten, we, we've kind of digested your stuff here a little bit. And first of all, I'd like to say, we're sorry. I mean, I'm a contractor. I know what you're going through. The invoices, what we've got figured right now, with the exception of $47,371, which you build up to end of October.
Yes.
So what we're talking about is what you got to the end of September. Cassie should have given you a check for $56,891.25. Okay, here's an offer we want to make to you right now. We're willing to give you a check by Friday of this week for $176,7375, which will get you current through the end of September, on stipulation. You do not charge for remobilization and things like that, and we'll make you whole this week.
We can do that.
We felt that with the extenuating circumstances, and we want to get this project finished for our county, for the people of Craigsville, since it's taken so long. And I think this is one of the ways we can speed the project.
So we'll basically come your bank for a little while, and there will be an agreement. We'll need you to sign. The lawyers will prepare that stating if by some chance you get this money directly and it doesn't come to us, that you will pay it back to us. But other than that, if you will waive the mobilization and things like that and keep it on the contract, we'll make you whole this week.
And Cassie, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is for the 75% we are liable for. Who tells the other 25 that would come from?
She's already paid it.
Yeah.
That is what you paid?
Yes.
Right.
So it would be $170,673.75. We should be able to get the agreement down here by tomorrow Friday, and Bobby said he can get the check ready, so you can pick it up Friday and sign the agreement if, if we have the.
That, that's fair enough.
We just want to, like, like Lloyd said, it's different circumstances. It's, it's that we, we want our contractors to be made whole, and we want you to feel good about working for our county, so we're willing to help you in this situation.
Is that remobilization and demobilization, or just remobilization?
Well, he, he was just going to charge us for the remobilization of company.
Okay, yeah.
Which was, he estimated around 12, 14,000, a change order, so there just wouldn't be another change order.
And you're agreeing with him?
Yes.
Okay, so there'll be, need to be a motion made for that offer.
I'll make the motion that we go ahead and pay the.
Master Services.
Master Services $170,673.756.
After the signing of the agreement?
After the signing of the agreement.
So that motion's on the floor, is ready discussion. Questions from legal counsel?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All that being said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, the motion does carry. And of course, this is temporary county money, as Commissioner Chapman said. However, this money is currently sitting with the state with the auditor's approval waiting. So, you know, the county will be reimbursed, whole 100% of what we're giving out will be received back to the county and deposited once again into the general fund for the county's benefit.
And, and we anticipate that this money will be back in the next month or two.
Yes.
They'll, they'll just reimburse us, get us the money back, and.
And for the record, since it was a part of the motion, that was intended to become, to come out of the general fund. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. We feel six months is, is too long for a contractor.
Right. But the originating funds will come out. We appreciate working with you. Hopefully, we'll get this project wrapped up, and Craigsville will be.
Get it finished up for us.
That's right.
In case we get another flood or whatever we need it.
Yeah.
Okay, because winter time's coming, okay?
Likewise, you know, on that end of, you know, we're glad to work with you all on it and trying to expedite everything to complete the project and get it off of our books also, et cetera.
Sure.
You know, the one thing is, hopefully, when, once we complete the work, closeout documents and everything will be sent through, final payout will be sent through, and then a, an application for the 10% retainage. And hopefully, we can get that money fairly quickly, that we're not five, six months out on that again.
Right.
Guys, appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
That being said, we had a couple of appointments that we unfortunately ran our time over with the previous one and all the dealings we needed to take care of. So Macy, Drezek, and Ricky Trotter will be rescheduled to a later meeting. That being said, of course, this would usually be our public comment period. While it does not reflect on the agenda, I still want to offer that. If there's no objection, is there anyone here for public comment? Hearing none. That being said, real quick, just for commissioners' comments, I'd like to begin that, if you all have anything you'd like to discuss, we can discuss that shortly. So, you know, we've talked about for many years now, the fire fee petition and things of that matter. I, I got with our director, Mr. John McGinnis of Homeland and Security, Homeland Security Management, to just talk about really, you know, the kind of costs and stuff they have. I mean, the city of Somersville was well-funded through their own fire fee and their out-of-city. Richwood is, but these other fire departments have their state money and they're fundraising. Well, a lot of people may not understand just how expensive it is anymore to run a fire department, and so thankfully, with John, he collected some of this information that I wanted to pass along and just, just to further explain why this commission and the fire departments are asking for this support in just quite frankly, keeping the doors open of the fire departments. One firefighter's bunker gear is $2,554, and that includes the helmet, the hood, gloves, coat, pants, and boots, which of course, they're ready to go into action in a fire scene, and those have a lifespan of 10 years. So some of these older firemen have gone through multiple, multiple, multiple sets of these, and that is state required. Breathing apparatus for each fireman is $4,500, and each truck must have at least four, regardless of, regardless of, you know, how many people are in the truck at that time, and they have to have at least four backup bottles, which are $684 apiece. Supply hose, which of course, you see from the truck, from the hydrant and stuff like that, for 800 feet at 5 inches, that's $438, which is tested yearly, which by the way, the actual testing itself is usually between $2,000 and $5,000 per department. 4 inches, $371 for 800 feet, and 3 inches, $235 for 800 feet. One nozzle for these actual hoses is $1,349, and they have a shorter than usual lifespan just for the amount of pressure that they do hold back. 24-foot ladder for big fire department grade is over $360. Two pipe poles, which they have to have per truck, is $182. Have to be regularly maintained and/or replaced. One firefighter-rated ax. You can go to tractor supplier or wherever, buy an ax for 30 bucks. They have to pay $154 per ax, and they have to have multiple per truck. To have one certified pumper truck, not including the truck, not including the pump, not anything else, just to put the gear in it, is $30,000, and that equipment is $29,779 to just equip that before you put man, fuel, or, or an actual pump on it. And for just a very basic pumper these days, it is over $325,000, which as you can see, most departments are running older trucks and very well could be looking at greater expenses in replacing those trucks going down the road. And most departments, they would do good to get a loan on $325,000. That's nothing against the fire departments, however, it's a realistic view into the cost of a fire department, and at the end of the day, the commission is responsible. I really do not want to see a county commission fire department. You know, I'd like to leave it to our volunteers and, and our local communities, but if they do close, we're next. We have county, probably, employee fire departments that would have to service the areas of the county. So that being said, with all that being said, you know, if you, if you find it upon yourself a responsibility, please do contact your local fire departments, your local firemen and women, and get ahold of that petition and sign it. It's a $35 a year fee. We believe it's very reasonable. It's a $35 a year fee, we believe it's very reasonable, it's comparable with the city of Somersville, and really, it is a safeguard to keep our fire departments local, keep them volunteer and not county paid, and again, we, you know, a lot of things I think government needs to stay out of the way of, and making sure our communities are protected by fire service is one that I would like to leave to the volunteers at all costs. So, that being said, is there any other comments or discussions the Commissioner would like to have at this time?
I'd like to also add that loss of the fire department in rural area would cause a major insurance increase if you could even get it for your homes, and that's a valuable thing to keep our fire departments there, and certainly, just even the cost of maintaining our buildings and those things, the insurance, the workers' comp fees that are paid for when these people are out, there is, it's just, it costs a lot of money to keep these there in hand, it's one of those things that when we need them, we need them, okay?
Absolutely.
And I would encourage the public to support this, because I really think it gives us what we need, and it's a very fair fee.
Okay, all good. Okay, that being said, with no other discussion to be had, is there a motion to adjourn this regularly scheduled meeting of the Nicholas County Commission on Wednesday, November 3rd, 2021?
I'll make that motion.
Motion's on the floors, we're in discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against, the motion does carry, we stand adjourned.